Out on the internet and YouTube, so you gotta quit talking about Darren Jacobs that way.
That's right, change the conversation.
We already mentioned Darren Jacobs.
We got that out of the way. He asked to join the insiders group and I screenshotted it, sent it out to you guys, so you have it. But I let him in. He's a probationary member for now.
Sweet.
See if...
When's his probationary period up? Have we discussed that at all?
Maybe as long as Tanner's suspended.
Oh, sorry, I've already messed this up here.
Man, he's got the sound on. The rookie move.
Yep.
There we go. See, I have my vibrates on, but it still comes through when I...
I'm too low-tech to try to do this while we're on air, so...
It's alright, no worries.
I'll look at it later.
No worries.
Alright.
And I'll get it rolling so that I can read comments as they're coming along. I've made the same tragic mistake that Nate did, or that Clay did, so I can't cast too many stones.
Nate doesn't make mistakes.
No.
So I've heard.
No. Alright, everybody ready?
Ready.
Welcome to the Ball Sog Liberty Podcast on the We're Libertarians Network. I am your host Jeremiah Morrell. As always, I'm joined by our co-host Dakota Davis and Clay Morgan. Welcome gentlemen.
Hey.
Hey.
I had to jump up, I was looking at my show notes real quick.
That's alright. This show is about our lives in rural Indiana. It's a show that folks... Man, I am struggling.
It's the live feed.
The bright lights. This show is about folks who are involved in politics. We promise our episodes are going to be fun and an easy listen. We interview people who are influencers, elected officials, political experts, and folks that we just find interesting. Today for episode 24 of the Ball Sog Liberty, we are joined by Henry County Council President, Mr. Nate Lamar. Welcome Nate.
Thank you. Appreciate this, and thanks for hosting here in your home, Dakota.
Yeah, absolutely. I love it. This is a dream come true.
We're in the world famous studios north of Q Avenue.
Exactly.
It's a top-secret location.
It's not even a home away from home. It's like home at home.
That's right.
That's correct.
It's a second-floor penthouse studio.
People always talk about, you know, whenever you talk to those people that are lucky enough to work from home. I mean, I guess I can say that now, but Jeremiah doesn't pay me enough to really classify it as work.
No, but you do get the exemptions now on the business expense of having the home.
Yes.
You've stolen that deduction away from me.
Oh, yeah, it's all mine now.
Yeah. So we are broadcasting from the new studio for the very first time. Facebook Live and the subsequent YouTube feed video that's available. So from time to time, we'll look down and see some comments. Can't guarantee that we're gonna catch them all or be able to interact with everybody on all of those, but they're there and it's kind of a fun community event for everybody else that's there. We have rearranged the studio against your wishes. We've changed out the table and started over. And now we got everybody in the shot.
Yeah, we do. Jeremiah, this is the first time that you've seen it, right?
I've been here.
Oh, sorry, I said Jeremiah. I meant to say Clay.
Yeah, it is. Yep. Other than watching you guys on the Facebook Live when you've been testing it out, so yeah.
Yeah, what'd you think?
I thought it was pretty cool.
You think it's neat?
Yeah, sounded good, looked good.
So, we're a month ahead of schedule. We were trying to be here by November 6th was the goal that we had set. And just kept picking away at it.
It's passion.
And here we are.
Passion.
You know, it's really because of the donations that came pouring in whenever we asked for them. We had a big support group of people that really wanted to see us take off and be successful. And because of that, we were able to get this done literally a month before schedule. Like, it was what, November 6th?
Yeah, I think that was our target.
Yeah, that was like, alright, we're gonna try to get it by November 6th. And here we are, and it's October 5th.
So yeah, we've got more soundproofing panels. We have the new table, new blackout curtains up everywhere, so you don't have those junky ones here anymore. New tablecloth, so yeah.
Nope, new blackout curtains and draper shades underneath.
Draper shades underneath, hidden deep. And then you have the Lisa Crosby light kit.
That's right.
We're well illuminated.
Yeah, and we worked all day on this Saturday.
Yeah.
We literally, like, our Saturday for Jeremiah, Audrey, and myself was working on the studio, thinking, compiling a list of things that we needed, getting the table from Jeremiah's house. And then eventually, we went and did a little thing with Clay at 4, right?
Yeah, there you go.
So we've been promoting it for a few weeks that we were gonna be a part of the Victory Lane Camp's chili contest. And that was Saturday, Dakota, myself, and Sheriff McCorkle. And as predicted, a non-pasta chili entry did win, so...
Yeah, that is true.
It was a real disappointment to your mother that you let that happen.
Yeah, she did. I saw that she commented on that. She was like, didn't I raise you better?
Now, which one I know. Didn't you have differing opinions on the pasta?
Yeah, I'm fully anti-pasta.
You were definitely no pasta.
That would be, that's what you'd call goulash.
You were pasta-permittable.
Nate, what belongs in chili?
I do like Cincinnati chili. I like pasta and chili.
See, that's very different. That's like a totally separate category.
It's almost like spaghetti.
Yeah. It's like a Skyline Chili, the three ways that they have. Those are awesome. I really like those.
So, and then while we were there, we had the little inner child in Dakota got excited because the hot air balloons were set up. Well, the van was there. I guess it wasn't actually set up, so we had the promise of a hot air balloon ride.
Whenever we pulled in, the hot air balloon company was unloading the basket for people to ride in.
Right.
And I made the connection, they had a sign set up that said, "Are we on your bucket list?" And I'm like, yes, that is definitely on my bucket list. Like, I've always... There's a little thing whenever I was in elementary school where one of the teachers won a contest and got to take a full-fledged hot air balloon. And I can remember like watching her go up and everything and just like was in total amazement. And ever since then, I've wanted to do a hot air balloon ride. So I was so excited.
That was awesome. It's great that you were excited about that. I loved the video.
Yes. Yeah, and his face, there's a video, if you go back and look at the Ball Sog Liberty page, you could see when I broke it to Dakota, they probably weren't gonna let him go up 1,000 feet. And it was gonna be tethered, and he was ready to go home at that instant. It was over. The dream was crushed.
You could see his face just drop.
He said, "You know those are tethered, right? It's just tethered balloon rides." I was like, tethered? You mean like tied off? He's like, "Yeah, you're only gonna go up like 10 or 15 feet." I was like, what?
We can get the same effect on a stepladder if you want. Just a big orchard ladder.
I still would've been happy with it, like just getting in there, but my condition for that would've been that the guy would have had to let me pull the little flame...
Oh, yeah.
You know? I would've had to do that, and then I would've been satisfied.
Yeah, I've never done a hot air balloon. You ever done a hot air balloon ride?
No, unfortunately, I haven't.
Yeah. Have you? No, see, none of us have. One day, we're gonna have a real field trip, and the four of us are gonna get a hot air balloon.
I've always wanted to go skydiving, too.
You can do that one on your own.
That's a big one. I just wanna do all of that stuff. Skydiving, base jumping.
Adrenaline junkie.
Maybe like one of these days.
Base jumping is tough to pull off in central Indiana.
Yes.
Hey Dakota, you're young enough, join the Army and you can go skydiving. That's what I did at Flinning, Georgia.
Oh, yeah? Oh, so you're an Army veteran?
Sure am. Absolutely. We'll get into that on Nate's...
I don't know much about Nate. Whenever he walked in the door was the first time I've ever actually met him. Like, I've seen him around places.
But he is kind of close to you in a different way, right?
Yes, I guess you could say that. He's going to be eventually.
Yeah.
I mean, he's close to my soon-to-be mother-in-law. You guys work together, right?
About 20 feet away from each other.
So they are literally close, like 20 feet together.
You guys are almost family.
Very close.
How long have you and Monica worked together?
Monica started there before I did. I don't know the exact date, but I began work at Draper in July of 1999. So I've been there just over 18 years now.
Yeah, so you've been in Monica's since I was four years old. Yeah, a lot longer than what I have. Pales in comparison to my five years.
There you go.
So I guess that we know whose side she's gonna take if things come crashing down between Nate and I.
I don't know if Nate got an invite to the wedding, but he's obviously gonna be sitting on Monica and Audrey's side, on the Draper side, in the Spice Land Church. So I've known Nate for, gosh, this goes back to probably right around the time you were starting with Draper. I was in high school and you were doing the GOP speech contest, probably one of the first or second years.
You competed in, I believe, the first year we had that.
Yeah, I'm the old savvy veteran.
And we're now in the 21st year of it.
It's old enough to drink.
And last year, for our 20th anniversary, we had a record turnout. We had 15 kids compete from throughout Henry County.
I think the first year I competed in that, we were at the Best Western at the time.
That's right.
In the conference room back there, yeah.
And there were what, like only three competing that year?
Yeah, I placed in the top three. I don't know how many there actually were.
Just like you were valedictorian of your class?
Graduated in first of my class, Dakota. So, yeah. Just like when you walk through the halls at Tri-Hi, where you're from, all the valedictorians are on the wall over there. If you walk down the hall at my parents' house, my picture's on the wall over there too, from first of my class. Yeah, it's small victories in life. You have to set achievable goals, and then you're happy with it.
Yeah, my friend Chase Payton, who listens to this show, always tells people that he graduated top of his class, too. And like, that was on his college application. He was valedictorian. He went to Freedom Christian Academy out on Highway 38 here in Henry County.
Were there like three people in his class that year?
There were three people in his class that year. Their cap and gowns were colored red, white, and blue.
You got everybody covered.
Wow, nice.
So, and you served in the Army, correct?
That's correct. Active duty from 1985 to 1992.
Excellent. And then you are West Point graduate.
That's correct.
As well. It's starting to sound like a resume for a congressman if we keep going. So... The... I've slayed Clay already. Hold it together, sir. You gotta be a professional. And you also have worked as a liaison for the congressional delegation as they've gone out and found or recruited people in our area for West Point, for the academy, right?
That's correct. I serve as Military Academy Liaison Officer for the 6th Congressional District. And that's just a fancy title for a West Point recruiter. So that's what I do.
He knew me in high school, and yet he never tried to recruit me for West Point. I got overlooked. I don't know if he did that job back in the late 2000s, late 90s, but...
I started in 1998.
Yeah, he definitely had the opportunity.
I had to wait for a guy to retire from that position until I could take it. So 1998, that's when I became the recruiter for this area.
Well, they're very cool. So this Republican speech contest that I was a part of, tell us about when. It's coming up. It's a fall event, right?
That's correct. It's always the first Thursday in November, or I shouldn't say always, because we moved around over the years. It used to take place in the spring. But for the past three or four years now, it's been the first Thursday in November, which is interesting, especially in election years.
It's right there, election week, correct?
Right before, either right before or right after the election, depending on how the calendar falls.
Yeah, absolutely. So you've opened it up to anybody from the county, and then you bring in different judges from outside of the county, right?
That's correct. It's open to anyone grade 7 through 12, who is a Henry County resident, be it public school, private school, homeschool.
What's your topic this year?
This year, our topic is, "What's your opinion of the first year of the Trump-Pence administration?"
Are all answers acceptable?
Yes. All answers are acceptable. We feel like an open-ended topic like that will hopefully generate interest among our teenagers. You can each have one of those.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, so, and you have cash prizes, and then a lovely award of... I think you get an honorary non-voting membership in the Republican Club.
That's correct.
So you guys, there's a party, and then there's also like a Republican Club for the county. What's the difference between those two?
The Henry County Republican Central Committee is the official body of the Republican Party in Henry County. The Republican Club is what's called an auxiliary party organization. Larger counties will typically have like a Republican Women's Club, Republican Men's Club, Young Republicans, and College Republicans. But in Henry County, we just have one club called the Republican Club.
Gotcha. Well, it's tough enough to staff a county party without having eight or 10 different subgroup parties.
I heard at the dinner I was at, speaking of all these clubs, I just thought about it. Somebody was in town looking to start a Young Republican Club.
I heard that. Yeah, I heard that recently. I think it's Ben Fisher, who is a Daleville Town Councilman, and also he's an officer in Delaware. He may be president of Delaware County Young Republicans. I think he wants to try to start that organization here in Henry County as well.
Well, I mean, the true conservative young people already have Young Americans for Liberty.
Well...
Available on like every college campus.
You know. We don't have a college... Well, we have Ivy Tech.
Yeah, we have the Danielson Center, too.
So, yeah, that is true.
Is the Danielson Center, is it still open? What have you all heard on it?
Oh, as far as I knew, it was. I don't know.
Okay. Seems like someone told me IU East had moved some classes from there to the Ivy Tech building. Have any of you heard that?
I don't know. I haven't heard enough to add on that.
Maybe somebody watching right now will let us know.
We may have that. What Travis is picking on us. Travis White says, "Oh, I see. When Nate doesn't talk loud enough, Jared adjusts his mic." When I'm not loud enough, I get trash talk. Travis, you're the media, so we have to pick on you. And Travis says he wrote a story on the Danielson Center. He's not saying what it is. We have to go buy the paper to learn what Travis said. But he says he wrote a story on it. So Nate, you've been making the tour of... Sitting around and meeting folks and running all over the... Not all over the state, but darn near all over the state, 19 counties.
Yeah, 19 counties throughout the 6th District, which comprises east-central and southeastern Indiana. It's been a challenge. I'm thankful that our older daughter Elizabeth was able to be my driver to a lot of those. Plus, you know, she liked it. She was able to take advantage of it to rack up the hours she needed to get her driver's license, especially the 10 hours of night driving.
Absolutely. I didn't know that anymore. You have to track that now? As you're getting your...
Supposed to. 40 hours of daytime driving plus 10 hours of nighttime driving to get a driver's license.
Yeah, but I can remember being in high school. That was the thing whenever I was trying to get my license.
Four years ago?
Yeah, exactly. Four years ago. No, five years ago. Five and a half.
You wanna slap him?
He's still young enough to like, he's still been caught by some of these new laws.
Yeah. But I would just drive my mom to work every morning before I had to go to vocational school. And I was worried at the time that, like, since the sun was partially coming up whenever I was driving her to work, that it wasn't gonna count. I don't know why, and like, it makes me sound like an idiot 16-year-old, but like, I was actually worried. I'm like, oh man, they're not gonna let me get my license now. It's not legitimately nighttime. The sun's coming up.
Poor guy. I feel bad that you had to go through that stress like that.
You're gonna lose on a technicality.
Yeah.
Reporter White is telling us that there are no official plans yet. More to come by the end of the year, so... No news on the Danielson Center. They're being dodgy on the tough questions.
Okay, interesting. Well, reassure Travis that I am a Courier-Time subscriber. So yeah, I do buy the paper, and I will look for his story.
I think everybody at the table is a Courier subscriber.
Is a reader.
Oh, well, you don't have a subscription for the...
I don't wanna lie. I know, I don't wanna lie. I can't lie.
Man.
I know. Read my lips.
How in the hell do you run a barber shop without a daily newspaper?
They come in and tell me the news.
There you go. And then Travis comes through and reports back out what the story is.
It's like a beauty shop. You get all the local town gossip, just...
There is a lot of conversation. You find stuff out every day.
Yeah.
For sure.
I think you told me that one time. You said that it was like, whenever I first started going to your barber shop and I was telling you a story, and you said, "Maybe you already told me that. I don't know. I hear so many stories throughout the day."
Some true, some false, some kinda in-between.
Clay's my barber, and he and I talk politics, especially when I'm the only one that's in there. Then we can really talk politics. But when others come in, then, yeah, we have to...
You have to be careful about what's gonna go on down there.
It's all those secret meetings.
I walked in, I ruined Darren Jacobs' day last week when I walked in because he was there. And I almost turned around and left, but instead I just took pictures and said, "Those are for the internet."
That was awesome.
So, yeah, that's the way I like to do it.
I've been in Clay's barber shop like an hour after my haircut's done, talking about random political things.
It's the place.
Yep, it's the place to go.
So you guys are both members of the Henry County Council. Well, you don't have a quorum here, but we got a hell of a lot of the members. We've got two of the seven members of the Henry County Council here tonight.
28%.
Man, he's good at math.
I told you, he's a walking calculator.
He is.
He is. That's what I tell everybody about Nate. He's a walking calculator.
So, over a quarter of the Henry County Council is here in your spare bedroom, Dakota. You guys are in budget time. So the main responsibility of a county council is to set a budget for the county. So you've been going through a process, and Clay's tried to lay this out, but we'll kinda update us as to where we're at. There are expectations and workshops that you guys go through for a revenue forecast. And then in the last couple of weeks, that's been updated, and you've had to make some readjustments.
That's correct. We haven't had to do a third day of budget workshop since, I believe, my first year on county council in the summer of 2007. We had to do three days then. Since then, we've been able to accomplish everything, you know, in only two days. This year, though, we did meet for two days in mid-August. And then the auditor, right before she had submitted the budget to the Department of Local Government Finance, she received new information from them, saying that projections were down for Henry County, which I found a little strange, especially on the county option income tax being down, because our unemployment rate has gone down substantially. So one would think the...
As your unemployment rate goes up, then you would think you have more money coming from it.
Right. Yeah, one would think the revenue would have gone up from the county option income tax.
So the county is funded by property taxes?
That's correct.
Different sorts of local option income taxes?
That's right.
And then, are there other revenue sources? I guess you get some small fees and use...
Fees like in the recorder's office, the prosecutor's office, the jail. Those are the fee-generated... The clerk's office as well. Those are the fee-generating branches of county government.
So like a court? Are the courts paid for by the state, or are they county-funded?
Some of both.
Okay.
Now, court fees have to be paid to the county clerk of courts.
Right.
Child support, you know, things like that.
But like your prosecutor's office, and some of those folks are state-funded, right? Or do you have to still handle...
Here's the issue on the prosecutor's office. It used to be that when you got a speeding ticket, you could request the pre-trial diversion. I know that from experience, about 15 years ago. And if you paid approximately $150 above and beyond the speeding ticket fine... That would help fund the prosecutor's pre-trial diversion budget. The problem is, though, the state is taking more and more of that revenue away from the counties.
Interesting. Alright.
So we do have like some prosecutors paid by the state, and then we have a couple, one or two, paid by the county. There's kind of a division there, or something like that anyway. But then the judges are paid by the state.
Very cool. So, as you've gone through this, you've got, I guess, you're done with your workshops now, and now you have basically a final reading or an adoption at your official county council meeting that's coming up this month?
Yeah, that'll take place Wednesday, October 25th.
Okay.
The actual budget adoption.
So what happens, like I served on the Henry County Memorial Park Board, and I know that there were some expectations that there were gonna have to be some scale backs there, and then with the Health Department as well. What kind of adjustments were made to these? And are there any... Are you expecting to have to have any staffing level changes? Or is it administrative adjustments? Or what kind of things are coming with the budget if it passes?
It's unfortunate that the property tax caps have cramped probably 85 of Indiana's 92 counties in a major way. But it seems that the Department of Local Government Finance picks on health departments and park departments more than anything else. They have borne the brunt of the property tax caps more than the general fund has.
How does that work?
Is that a fair statement, Clay?
Yeah, yeah. It seems to be they're the ones that, kind of, the state says, okay... And honestly, I don't understand how it works or why it works this way, but yeah, they'll take those two departments and say, okay, here's your limit. Here's what you're gonna get.
It's like they're at the end of the line, almost. I'm not sure how that works.
I think the reasoning for it is, they are fee-generating branches of county government. You know, you pay fees when you go in to get travel vaccines, or a birth certificate, or a death certificate at the Health Department. Likewise, you know, to rent buildings or a shelter house at Memorial Park, yeah. So that might be why they get squeezed so hard.
Interesting.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we wanted to touch on, was what exactly the county Health Department does. Like, I know that you go in there and like you can get vaccines there, and your death and birth certificates and things there, but like, I mean, what else is the scope of their work at the Health Department?
One thing I'd like to mention that is helpful to me, since I do international at Draper, being able to get vaccines for the places I go to, whether it be hepatitis A, hepatitis B, typhoid, yellow fever, you know, the list goes on and on. I don't have to drive to Indianapolis, because the Henry County Health Department is the only health department in this part of Indiana that has travel vaccines. Even the larger counties that are our neighbors, like Hancock, Delaware, Madison, and Wayne County, do not have travel vaccines offered at their health departments. So I'm thankful for that at our Health Department.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, but you can't get that at your, like a local doctor's office? You have to go... Is that something that's typically just offered through a health department?
A lot of the exotic and tropical disease vaccines are highly regulated. And so typically, only a county health department, or otherwise, a licensed travel clinic has access to those. Now, I believe the Draper Health Clinic has either hepatitis A or typhoid available. Can't remember which. But the others, you have to go to the Health Department to get.
Interesting. It's weird that it's regulated like that. I would've never thought that they would, you know, that you wouldn't be able to access that.
Yeah, I had no idea.
Interesting. I'm not sure what to think of that. It just seems strange.
Not even with Obamacare.
I don't think it's regulated because they're controlled substances. I think it's more regulated because, you know, the live nature of certain vaccines. They can't sit for too long without being used. Otherwise, they go to waste. I think that might be the reason behind it.
Yeah, absolutely. That makes sense.
Alright, so you've made your adjustments. You expect that to come through? And then there, I read in the local reporting that there are gonna be some changes with the county jail and the way that's set up, and some forward-looking changes there. What's going on over there?
That's correct. It's public knowledge that Henry County is currently facing a lawsuit against some former inmates, or a lawsuit by some former inmates against Henry County. And so we're just trying to make sure that to relieve prison overcrowding, we've properly funded four new corrections officers, who will have a women's dorm set up in what used to be known as the Work Release Center across the street south of the current jail.
Alright. And is there like a projection on time? Is it okay that by making that adjustment, you're gonna get another three years or five years life cycle out of that jail, or what's the... How does that work?
Clay would be better versed in this, because he's a member of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, who I know that group is waiting on the national consultant to present his findings. Is that correct?
Yeah, and so what it does in the process, it's not, honestly, it's never been mentioned, hey, let's buy X amount of time with this. It's just, we're overpopulated, so we had to make moves. We were facing sending residents to other jails, which I think the minimum cost is $35 a day.
And some counties have raised that to 55 a day, starting on October 1st.
And so we were told with the number that they would have to move to another jail. Sheriff McCorkle said it could cost the county over $20,000 a month to house these residents. So this was an adjustment to help alleviate that problem. Of course, we're in the midst of the federal lawsuits, so we're trying to do our due diligence with that. And so it did cause some shuffling. Our drug task force, our detectives, had to move to another building, which costs the county another $32,000 a year approximately with rent and utilities. And so we're just making those moves right now to take immediate action to help solve some immediate issues. But like Nate said, we've got this needs assessment coming in. I talked to one of our commissioners today. And hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll get that back. They sent him some information he was looking for. And so hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, he'll send us some info back. And then it's my hope that at our next council meeting, we can actually have something to present and say, here's some options. What's our next step?
Right. So then how do you... Okay, your population of your jail continues to increase, I guess, or you're getting... Or you're getting, you're bumping up against what's, you have to actually-
It has increased. Yeah.
Is that being driven because people are staying in the county jail instead of going to the state jail? Or are we just finding that we're ending up with more people that have to serve time? What's the driver of that issue?
Unfortunately, it seems like we're ending up with more people who have to serve time. But I do know that Henry County's judges are trying to find unique and creative ways to, you know, ease the burden of prison overcrowding. Such as, you know, more house arrest cases and things like that.
We're starting a, I don't know if it's officially, I don't think it's officially been started, but a drug court to help alleviate some of those issues. Maybe not, you know, someone has a drug violation, not sending them to, straight to jail. But having them go through this drug court process. And I don't understand all of it. I just know it helps with the burden of locking everybody up and try to alleviate the problem in a different way. But we are, for some reason, we are hitting the number 200. Whereas before it was, 180 was a big number. Now, it's getting to 200. And some of that-
You just look at the footprint of that building, you think that there's 200 people in there. It's just unbelievable.
Trust me.
It's a, I mean, it's a very small structure.
You ought to take a tour of it sometime. Yeah, just ask Sheriff McCorkle. He would be happy to give you a tour of the jail. It's a eye-opener.
I haven't taken a tour of that place since I was in high school. It's been a long time.
He's been very open about letting people come in.
Just this past year, I had to go in there. There's like an office in the front. And to, because I was going to apply for the sheriff's reserves, right? And I never actually did it because I got declined because I was only 20 and not 21 at the time. But anyway, I walk in there and like you can just tell. You know, like not even having to go into the actual jail facilities. You can, I mean, just by walking into the building, you're thinking about, there's 200 people. You know, behind these doors. And it's like, holy cow.
Yeah, it's pretty gym packed. I mean, so there is a real issue there. And with some of the state laws that you were hitting on some things there, with some of the changes. You know, the former Sheriff Baker was saying this, you know, before these laws took effect in the state. And he was saying, these laws would increase the jail population of local jails.
Yeah.
And so, now, we're beginning to see all over the state, it's not just Henry County, but all over the state, jails are becoming overcrowded now.
And you see like our neighbors to the north and our neighbors to the south, they're both building, you know, Rush County, I think, is in the process of building a jail. And Taylor County is looking, we've talked about this on the show before.
Yeah.
At converting the shell building, one of their shell buildings over to a jail facility. And I just continue to come back to it and say that it's a systematic thing. I'm not sure that warehousing is the solution. It's more of an issue of trying to find ways to get people out of there, whether it's skills programs or-
Right.
Education or different ways to keep them from coming in.
Or decriminalizing plants, maybe.
A lot of that, a lot of that will have to come from the state level.
Right.
And that's where, that's where I think, that's where the predicament, local officials are.
If we had somebody that could have influence at the state level that was from here.
Well, you never know. You never know.
Someday.
But that is the situation locals are in. Like even when we build our jail. And I heard this comment in the barber shop. And it makes sense. It's not that I like it, but it makes sense. If we're hitting 200, then we build for 200. What are we doing?
I mean, we continue to make more laws in this country, right? And in this state. More laws make more criminals.
Well, and here's the thing, criminal justice, you know, I'm a big advocate in believing that criminal justice could be reformed in such a way to help reduce this. But that's not the direction it's going yet.
Yeah.
So-
So, yeah, so from your seat, as a county council member, you're saddled with, here's-
Here's the law. Here's the way it is.
Here's what you're responsible for. Now, how are you going to, how are you going to actually fund that?
And it's sad that jail consultants, when they make plans for future jails and even future prisons, they look at the population of at-risk eighth grade boys. And they take that number and use some factor to project in the future to determine future prison and jail construction needs.
Do you know what they use to determine who is at risk?
No, I don't. Because I know that, I know that classification varies from one state to the next.
I didn't know if I would have been considered at risk when I was in eighth grade.
I think most of the time, in the things that I know of, they use, you know, family income. And then, you know, different stats of area, the town you live in or XYZ. Or sometimes even ethnic, whether you're-
Racial background.
Racial. There you go.
And then, I'm sure that, you know, we, school raids were announced today. Shenandoah, by the way, got an A across the board. So, congratulations to them. Some others didn't do quite as well, but I would imagine that that number-
What did try high get?
I think you guys were a solid B.
Yeah.
Nice, sounded okay too, except for the middle school.
It's not bad.
Sorry, Joe, your middle school's struggling. You gotta work on the keyboarding down there, Mr. Canary. Yeah, and I think, I think Wilbur Wright was a D.
Really?
That was, yeah, that was the worst of the grades that I saw.
You know, that's too bad. It's the, it's the area. Those teachers, I've dealt, been around those teachers for years.
It's not staffing. I'm sure of that.
They are awesome. But on, one thing I want to throw in too, while we're on the criminal justice part, as far as Henry County. We are actively involved in a program called the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative. So, we're on the front end, working with juveniles through our probation department, Judge Withham. And really, all the branches are actively working together to help prevent. So, hopefully, we can see the positive effects in years to come.
And then, I would imagine that's the, like, I don't know if this is something, it's existed the entire time I've been aware of county government. But the sheriffs have always run a camp here for youth.
Yeah.
Is that something that's done every, all over the state? Or is that a Henry County type program? And I assume that's going towards that goal.
In Wayne County, I think it's called the Respect for Law Camp. That's what I seem to remember from when I was in high school. I never did it because I was too busy in 4H every summer, as well as baling hay and de-tasseling corn in the summer.
You gotta watch these 4Hers.
We infiltrate, man. We're all over the place.
But yeah, that's what Wayne County called it. But it was essentially the same thing as what they do here in Henry County.
There's Clay. Clay, every episode, every episode, Clay just terrorizes us with the sound.
I was trying to look at comments. I can't look at the comments without it turning on.
And you can't mute the phone? One day, we'll teach you how to use your phone.
Would you please?
He's not a millennial like the rest of us, like Dakota and I. He's the Gen Xer in the crowd.
Exactly. I'm just kind of working my way into it.
Yeah, I'm at the top edge of Gen X. He's at the middle to lower edge of Gen X.
That's the way Dakota and I are. I'm like the world's oldest millennial. And Dakota is one of the world's, I think you are like the world's youngest millennial.
Yeah, I'm like, well, I'm like the last millennial.
Yeah.
But you know, that's what's neat about this program today. We've got, you know, some, a 20-something here, a 30-something, a 40-something. And I regret to say that I hit the half-century mark a few weeks ago.
Hey, there you go. There you go.
You're still running marathons and outperforming any of us. So, don't even start. Don't even start. Congratulations, by the way, to Elizabeth. She handed off her tiara last night. Your daughter's one of my 4H members in the Junior Leader Club. And she was the final, I guess, one of the final Henry County 4H ambassadors. So, she's fulfilled her duties last night. And we have a new Mr. and Ms. Henry County for 4H, so. Congratulations to the Lamar family.
What's that?
Clay's wife Beth said hello.
Oh, did she? I told her she could watch, so.
Well, you allowed her to watch? You gave permission?
I did. I allowed her. Because see, you know, around our house, I better stop now.
Oh, my gosh. Alright, so the last, the main topic that I wanted to cover on the county level side is we started to talk about the funding a little bit. And it's through property taxes. The county doesn't set property tax rates.
That's correct. They-
You like fund to a certain levy and then they adjust, but you have a cap. That's generally how it works, right?
Yes, and the property tax caps were voted in by public question in 2010. Indiana does not have the right of referendum like California is probably the most famous state that has that. Indiana has what's called public questions that can go on the ballot only after they have passed two separately elected sessions of the state legislature. And in 2010, the voters of Indiana passed by a pretty overwhelming margin to put the property tax caps in place.
Yeah, Indiana is- The first constitutional authorization for property taxes, by the way.
We are a pure republic in Indiana.
Yes.
Not, no democracy here, just a republic. That's the way it's supposed to be. No mob rule, no overwhelming. I can vote to take your property and you can't do anything about it. I like it. That's why I like Indiana.
It's always interesting when Dakota kind of goes off on his philosophical thought patterns.
I just, these things just pop in my head sometimes. You just sit in amazement? Yeah, I can tell because you kind of tilt your head over and your eyes get kind of squinty. And you're like, what's he gonna say next?
Alright, so you've got the property taxes. And then, does the county have, you have some influence over income tax levels, right?
That's correct. Every county in Indiana can adopt a county option income tax along with either a county economic development income tax or a, darn, I'm lost for words.
The bright lights. It's the way it goes. We're all getting used to them.
There's one called a GAAT?
CAGEIT.
CAGEIT?
Yes, adjusted, county adjusted gross income tax. SEDAT, county economic development income tax. Yeah, either one of those. You can't- Income tax.
Were you, were you on the council whenever Jeremiah spoke fervently against it?
He was very passionate, very fervent.
I was.
Nate said, "The hell with you, Jeremiah."
I think there's actually, honestly, I think there's two to three more local income taxes that are our options.
That are in line?
Wow.
Not in line.
Not in line.
You're warning us?
That are options.
I have my please-don't speech ready again.
Yes, right.
I can dust it off.
Yes.
And I'll be there this time.
Right.
Put you guys on double-barrel fire now.
Exactly, exactly.
That's alright. The city voted for it too. Everybody voted, literally every official voted for it that night.
It was unanimous on what's called the County Option Income Tax Council.
Okay.
The County Option Income Tax Council consists of-
All of the taxing levies. So, it's all of your towns and cities plus county, right?
That's correct. And they're apportioned. The county council controls 44%. Okay, there are 100 votes total.
Okay.
And it's roughly proportionate to population. County council controls 44 votes on the County Option Income Tax Council. City council controls 36 votes. The remaining 20 votes are allocated among every incorporated town in Henry County. To the tune of, and Clay, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Middletown gets three votes on there. Knightstown gets three votes. Spiceland gets two votes. And all other incorporated towns have one vote on there. Is that correct?
Incorporated towns, you mean like Dunree?
Like Moreland or Dunree or-
They've done a roughly proportionate to population.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm honestly, I'm not sure of the exact amount. I just know the others are very minimal.
Basically, they all have to revolt against you guys for you to lose a vote.
Yeah, really.
That's what our, that's what our last bullet point is on here with the county. And we plug that in because I'm the chairman of the party of the, of the county's Libertarian Party. Jeremiah is my right-hand man that walks me through everything because I don't know what I'm doing.
He's your personal advisor.
Yes.
And his consigliere.
Yeah.
Yours Fedigali.
The hand of the king, so to speak. Anybody watch Game of Thrones other than me here?
You're the one.
Alright.
Nate's busy traveling the world. He knows like 14 languages and runs in marathons. He doesn't have time to do the things what you do.
That's right. But-
He's gonna be a congressman or a senator, a state senator, or a state representative, or a county councilman. One of those things, most likely. Good chance of it. He's raised hundreds of thousands of dollars at this point. So, he's gotta spend it on something.
Jeremiah checks into this stuff.
He's gonna be like Evan Bai with just this huge war chest, looking for a raise.
Please, Jeremiah, don't compare me to Evan Bai.
Yes, I'm trying to help. Look at me helping.
That was the best comment of the night. Do not compare me to Evan Bai.
That was classic.
But anyway, part of the, one of the things that we, whenever you sign up to be a party member, and they give you our tenants, as well as signing your name to the non-aggression principle, which says that you will not initiate force.
I promise not to punch you, basically is what it says. Unless you punch me first, then I get to punch back. That's the non-aggression principle.
One of the tenants is against the income tax, be it federal, state, or local. So, that was my last point that I wanted to ask about. With two elected local officials here, how would this budget look without a local income tax? I mean, a lot of, I mean, obviously, you know, some more hardcore libertarians that Jeremiah and I both say that we're pragmatic libertarians, is what we call ourselves.
Is Rex Bell a hardcore libertarian by comparison?
He's a little, he's more pure than I am, probably. But at the same time, I think Rex is pretty pragmatic. But there are some, some absolute, you know, closer to anarchist libertarians that, you know, that argue over whether or not we should have stop signs or basic standards. And I'm not quite that far to the, down the libertarian rabbit hole. But you would probably consider me pretty extreme.
Yeah, but what, I mean, what, in my, in this perfect libertarian utopia that I've developed in my mind, it's, there's, there are no income taxes. And say we got there one day. Say, say that one day, our, our party gained enough influence, gained enough ground to where we had a majority in either the state or the federal house. And we voted no more income tax. But in this perfect world that I've imagined, there is an increase in sales tax. And there are still user fees around, which is my personal preference. Obviously, it's not going to be the same amount of money as an income tax. I mean, how, how do you think that that would change things?
Do you want to, just simple, and then let Nate speak since he's the special guest. But it would take a process of time. Because, you know, to make that instant shift would be very difficult. But pragmatically, I think it could be done, but it would have to be done over a period of time.
Right. Nothing is instant.
Right. Because right now, I know with our county budget, if you would instantly take the income tax away, you're talking-
Shambles.
Shambles. I mean, job losses. I mean, we would be in a, in a hard, I mean, because you, we would instantly lose, off the top of my head, $2 million at least between the COET and the LOET.
The way that, the way that, the way government is designed, you don't have the flexibility to make a lot of the decisions that you'd like to be able to make. You don't have a clean slate and get to set up the county the way you want to. You, and I noticed this from the three years, two and a half years I spent on the park board. You have, you work within the box that you're given. So, you don't have the flexibility to say, I want to, I want to do this at this rate and that with that rate. It's a, it's a very slow and painful process, at least from my view.
Indiana is a very federalist state. What I mean by that is decisions are made by the state legislature and handed down to county governments. County governments, for all the talk of home rule, county governments in Indiana do not have the level of home rule that county governments in most of our surrounding states have.
Right. You're basically charged with executing the plan.
That's correct.
And that the, so you don't have the ability to say, we're not, I don't even know if you, could you eliminate all, you could, you're still gonna have a 3.4% state income tax regardless. So, you've got a county income tax that's on, that's additional.
I'm going to have to check some tax tables again. But I don't think there are any counties left in Indiana without a county option income tax. A couple of counties in the extreme southwestern corner of the state, which had a lot of coal maybe 20 years ago, when the coal industry there was still viable. They had no county option income tax because they were making so much money off coal revenue.
Right.
But I think even those two counties have adopted it.
Interesting. Well-
You know, the question of income tax, I look at some of the other countries I've traveled to, you know, a few of which don't have an income tax. But they tend to be one-product economies where the government controls that one product. And I'm specifically thinking Saudi Arabia and the United Arab Emirates.
Yeah.
Okay, there's no income tax there. Although Saudi Arabia is going to be imposing the income tax because the price of oil has been so low for so long that they're to the point where they have no choice.
So, let's, I guess, on the, on the income tax side, let's, one more final question on that line. We've got the LOET that's put in place. Has that gone towards capital projects? Or what's the, what's the long-term future? And how has that been used over the, I guess, you're a year, year and a half into that being collected? Where's that, how does that fit in?
The public safety- The public safety lowit. Cannot ethically be used for salaries, okay? It needs to be used for things like jail repairs, uh, sheriff's vehicles, uh, equipment, um. Emergency management, uh, volunteer fire departments, you know, things that are public safety related. But it has to be tangible equipment, not salaries.
So basically capital, capital improvement. Is that, is that the way that it's worked so far, or has that, has that been stretched? How do you feel about the application since it's, it's been implemented?
On the county level, we, we have used that to the best of our ability. There have been situations where with the hiring of the four corrections officers for the women's dorm. We had to shift general fund money, um, to cover something that could have been covered by, uh, I'm sorry. We had to shift public safety lowit funds in exchange for something covered by general funds in order to fund those four positions. Is that, is that correct?
In that particular ins- instance there, um, it was monies. Because before I say this, my opinion of public safety lowit differs a little bit from some of the other council members. We can legally use public safety money for pay and benefits. You can use it. It, there's no rule that says you cannot, as long as it goes toward those that work in public safety. Um, like Newcastle did. Newcastle used theirs to give raises to their officers and fire department. But we have some on our council that would prefer not to do that, and I, I mean, I get it, so it's not worth fighting over. So instead, what happens is, we take, say, I'm just throwing numbers out. Say a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for jail maintenance comes out of general fund. But we need a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to pay for X amount of officers. So what we do, and, and it, it's just a switch around. All we do is we just take the lowit to pay that one-twenty-five that came from general and use that general one-twenty-five to pay for the officers. I'm okay with that because it, it, it all stays in the sheriff's department budget. The one thing that I've been critical of the past couple of years, um, and, and tried to keep a, a finger on, and been a part of. I mean, you know, I'm there on the council, but it's just when we use, um, public safety money. To fill gaps.
Right.
In the general fund. That's where we start getting off on the wrong trail. So, and we, and so on that note though. We did it last year and, and I wasn't pleased with the way it happened last year, and I voted no on the budget. This year, we did it minimally, and given our current situation, it, it's, it's like, okay, we, it's a give and take and.
I was at the, I can't remember if it was, I guess it was probably your August meeting, your August meeting, and there was this. I think there was final funding of Prairie Township getting a new, new, new piece of equipment.
That's correct.
Yes.
And there was some discussion amongst the members at that time that we need to have a scoring system or a plan going forward, or, you know, so that it's not arbitrary. Is that still a pro- in process, or where is that at?
That's being completed. Thanks to Clay obtaining information from the Shirley Volunteer Fire Department. We came up with a process by which a volunteer fire department. That does not receive, um, public safety lowit funding can apply for it from the county. Now, the example of that was, um, Prairie Township. They initially weren't going to receive additional funding from the town of Mount Summit, nor the town of Springport. To go towards the purchase of this new fire truck. Eventually, uh, Mount Summit, you know, did, you know, fess up and, you know, sent their portion.
That's good.
But it wasn't enough to cover it. So at the county level, we did that because in the case of Prairie Township. They are the second most populous township in Henry County, with Henry Township being the most populous. And Henry Township, the city of Newcastle, has full-time firefighters. Prairie Township is also responsible for the prison, the geocorrectional facility. Therefore, we determined that it was in the county's best interest to go ahead and help them, you know, purchase this new fire truck. Likewise, uh, we have another township, Liberty Township, that has approached me, although they have not yet completed the paperwork.
It's in your, your district, I guess, over in the eastern part of the county.
Because Liberty Township has no incorporated areas.
Not even Millville? Millville's not incorporated?
Therefore, Liberty Township has no choice but to apply with the county, and now that process is in place.
Interesting. Alright, well, Nate, I know you've gotta duck out of here early, so we'll give you a chance for any final thoughts on your side. Anything you need to plug or announcements you might need to make, and then, um, we'll let you buzz out whenever you want to. You're welcome to stay until the end, or let you, excuse yourself at any time.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Well, you touched on this earlier, and uh, it has been an interesting six-month exploratory campaign. But I have decided that I will not be running for Congress in the sixth congressional district. Another opportunity has presented itself. Last week, State Senator Doug Eckert, State Senate District Twenty-Six, announced his retirement. And I'm now looking at that. Nothing definite yet, but uh, State Senate District Twenty-Six is the northern third of Henry County. It's southern, western, and northern Madison County, and it's the northern half of Delaware County plus Yorktown. So it's a very rural district.
It's a big C around Muncie.
That's correct. It's like a giant crescent moon around Muncie and Anderson, both for that matter.
Would Moreland, like Moreland be in there?
That's correct. Yes, uh, everything in the northern third of Henry County, the, the US Thirty-Sixth Corridor is in that district.
Absolutely, cool.
Yeah, it's basically the, uh, the Henry County portion probably is the exact same portion that Commissioner Baker has, I would imagine. Is that, is it pretty much the same, same area?
That's right. The, um, northern district of the commissioners, um, Stony Creek, Blue River, Prairie. Jefferson on Fall Creek, it's, it's those townships.
Very cool. And then is it Pendleton? Is Pendleton?
That's correct, yeah. Pendleton's in there, Pendleton, uh, Lappel, Elwood, Alexandria, and then Gaston, Albany, Eaton, Yorktown.
Lots of small parades potentially in your future. Alright, and the Sul- Sulfur Springs Mud Bog. I, every year, that big parade.
There you go.
So you get to look forward to that.
The best barbecue chicken around.
And you might, you might see Jeremiah fall off the trailer.
It's happened before.
But I just wanna point out how, how historical this actually is. Because, uh, Mr. Lamar has come on the balls hog of liberty to tread the water a little bit here and be a little more open about his, uh, future.
I feel like we knew more about them than we did before.
Wow.
There we go. Jonathan Lamb has fought off one challenger already now.
That's what it was.
But uh, his, uh, unfor- yeah, unfortunately for him, his biggest challenger is yet to come.
As he called a nine-hundred-pound gorilla in the, uh, the vice president's brother.
He called.
Yeah, he called. I called it an eight-hundred-pound gorilla, and he said it was a nine-hundred-pound gorilla, so. I look forward to, uh, to Clay delivering on the, uh, delivering on the promise of having all of the six congressional district candidates stop by here.
We will continue to work on that.
We also, is, we also need to try to reach out to.
Thanks so much, Jeremiah. Appreciate this.
And you're welcome to stay as long as you'd like, of course.
There's a couple.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Thanks, Clay.
We're gonna try to not have Nate trip as we let him out. Oh, man. Alright. Your dog's not gonna eat him on the way through, on, on the way through the studio, are ya?
No, she's in, she's in.
Hallways and corridors. Alright, Nate, we'll see you later.
Take care.
Fun stuff. Alright, I look forward to the full report from, uh, from Dakota's in-laws, uh, on how, how this went. Oh, man, so, uh.
So we ha- have we had any questions yet about anything pertinent to, to budget or county or?
Uh.
I'm sure there's been some comments.
Do you want the comments?
I'm sure there's been some comments.
They get sticky. Uh, not, we've, uh, Travis White wants to know if any major announcements are made. He got a little something there at the end, if he made it back in time. Uh, Mr. David Herring, a former, uh, county commissioner candidate, has, uh, is, made some comments on the jail. And, uh, Rob Davis is less than satisfied with the, uh, with the answers on the local op- option income tax. But at the same time, Rob was right there with me. Rob and I were the two that offered testimony, so, uh, I'm not surprised.
Well.
Rob asked if there was a BS card we could throw at him.
Yeah, right. No, there is, there is, um. There's a lot there, that if, if you give me, um, you know, thirty minutes straight. We could maybe decipher through some of those questions, but there's a lot there, um, in, in this budget. There, there's things, there's things in the county, I still say it, I know there is, there's things in the county that we could, if we could take little pieces here and there. We, we could find some savings. I guarantee it. But until we have a, a full body that's willing to kinda dig into those things. It's gonna be very difficult to happen. Um, and then concerning the lowit tax, um. Right now, with, um. What we've been faced with in the county concerning criminal justice. It would take a, I mean, we'd have to sit down and really take a long process to figure out how to pay for the things we've been paying for. Uh, it's, it's more than, it's, it's, it's not cut and dry and not as simple as what we would like it to be. Because it's, we're just, we got a mess on our hands that we're trying to fix, we're trying to juggle. The future looks better. Although, I, I mean, I guarantee you that, the future looks better, but in the meantime, we're juggling.
You were very, you were very nervous and pessimistic going into this, this meeting you guys had.
Very much so.
I, 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 I hear that there was some sort of a turn or an adjustment and some, uh, some improvements in your big meeting Monday.
Yeah, the thing I was happy about is, you know, I was, I was really concerned that we were gonna have to make these huge cuts. And they were still gonna put permanent expenses in the, into the budget. Um, that, that was my issue a few years ago that I spoke about, and I, and I complained about, and I voiced my opinion and. And it didn't work, it didn't, you know, we still passed, uh, permanent expenses. And that year's the year we ended up having ninety, ninety-some thousand dollars short in payroll. And, uh, you know, we started the next year with two-hundred-and-twenty dollars, so I've been concerned. And to be quite honest, um, from our budget session over the month of August and September. Uh, I've been very concerned because everything I was hearing was looking like some, my opinion. Poor decisions were gonna be made, um, that were not beneficial to the, to the county's future at all. So, but what happened is, in, in our council meeting, um, you know, I, I basically gave a speech, to be honest. And, uh, upset some people, very much so, uh, very much so, and, um. But you know what? We came back Monday following, sat down, and it was a total different story.
I just, I just don't understand how people can get upset about that. About trying to be responsible.
One, one of the biggest problems for me, the, the, I think a lot of the, the frustration comes because I'm so. Uh, in comparison, so young and new to the council.
The five-year rookie?
Yeah, the five-year rookie, exactly. I think that's where the frustration comes. Uh, you know, I've, I've actually had one of the council members, uh, a couple of years ago admit it to me, that, you know. Um, they were very frustrated with me and they just said, you know, they took me to a back room, um, and said, "You know, you're right about what you say." It's just that, um. It's frustrating because we take it personal. We take it personal.
It's one of those things where they say, "Well, that's not how things are done here, new guy."
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. I've, I've heard several times, "Well, this is the way it's always been done." Well, that's not where we're at anymore, and, and I am outspoken, and, and you know what? Um, here's the thing, I can say when thing, i- if, if it, if we have a good plan on the table. I can say, "Hey, we got a good plan." I, I, I'm not a thorn in the side, just for being a thorn in the side. I, I just really care about the future.
Right, and you. We'll leave it at this, I guess, on the, and we'll move on to the topics. There are, uh, there are elections coming up in, in thirteen months. And there are four council seats available and one commissioner seat available, and I think a clerk and an auditor and, and a sheriff. So there's, if people wanna make changes in the county, they've got the opportunity to do so. And, uh, it's a good time to make your announcements in January, February, if you want more of those seats. And everybody should have to interview for their jobs, because they're all good people. Everybody that serves on the council is a good person.
And that's the thing, it's not about that, yeah, exactly. Just different points of view, different ways of approaching things.
Well, good deal. So, uh, trying to stay on track here with, uh, with the, the itinerary that Dakota has prepared for us, against my will.
Maybe we do need to have a special session with me on the budget, cause I still have more to say.
You still got, you still got more. We counterprogram next week, Cat and Agnos, a big episode twenty-five, the celebration episode.
We're a quarter of the way to the big one, oh, oh.
Well, that's it, we're on our way. Uh, Cat and Agnos, the number-one most downloaded podcast. She's gonna make her triumphant return for episode twenty-five.
Oh, wow.
And Dakota's promising champagne and caviar, so it's gonna be very exciting.
Hey, let me say one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the budget, cause a lot of people wonder, "How can you cut seven-hundred thousand?" Well, a big chunk.
Why not a million, man? Slash it, slash it.
Here's a big chunk, because the raises that were originally proposed.
Yep.
Which I said we can't afford.
Right.
With the, the raises plus the perf money, retirement money.
Right.
Three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars.
So it's a.
Three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, so.
This is like a Washington cut. It's a cut in the proposed increase, but not a cut in what was spent over last year.
Right.
Yeah.
That's part of it. Now, three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand of the seven-hundred. So, and, and again, so, so that, that was my frustration.
So you got over half.
That's what I was speaking. That's why I was kinda fired up, because we were almost ready. Most of that council was willing and ready to pull the trigger.
On an increase, in tax increase.
Increasing three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to a budget that we were barely making. That's why I was so mad. Now, when we sat down Monday. And the auditor's office had prepared potential cuts, but you're right, cuts to the proposed budget. We took those out, that instantaneously took three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars away. And so that's when I thought, "Okay, we've got a good start." Alright, now, there's, there was other items in there that were cut. Simply cut, cut, where we did reduce the general fund budget. And then there was another item where because, again, because of raised taxes. Because of raised taxes last year, more funding helped fund a particular, uh, computers. It was in the gen- it was in the commissioner's budget, helped fund some computers out of that, and so we could reduce it out of the general fund.
How many, what's the makeup of the county council? Let's get this out of the way real quick. How many Republicans?
Five-two?
Um, it, it's five-two. It's five-two Republican Democrat.
Okay, and whenever people.
Not our problem.
Well, hold on, whenever people say, whenever people talk about tax and spend. You know, they, whenever people talk about, uh, tax and spend, usually the word to follow that is liberal. They, whenever they describe a politician that is inherently liberal, like a, like a Bernie Sanders type, they're a tax and spend liberal, right?
Right.
We have, we have a majority Republican supposedly conservative county council that is tax and spend. That's the philosophy.
Well, here, here, here's, you didn't, see, I just said I wanted to make one more comment, but.
I tried to get you off this train, and now you're here, so good luck.
To, to end this.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna save some of this for the next episode.
To end this, um, tax and spend, I, I don't know that I would point the finger and say, "You're a tax and spend." But here's what I would say, in my, uh, five years of being on the council, uh, being the rookie, right?
You and Steve are both rookies. Does, does Steve take the terrible punishment you do as well, or just you?
Dugger?
Yeah.
He used to.
Yeah.
He used to.
Then he became a tax and spend Republican, and it was the only way.
That's not what I'm saying. But no, my, my first couple of years in there, me and him were, you know, getting hammered a little bit by, uh, other people, not, not drinking or anything, you know. But, uh, but anyways, no, no, here, here's where it is, and I've said this before, and, and I know it really ticks people off. And I know there's gonna be people here this that, I mean, that Facebook video I put out, I, I knew certain people were gonna watch it. Oh, man, they were hot. They were so mad at me, but I didn't say anything that wasn't true, and I'm not being mean.
Yeah. You can get, you can get mad about common sense as much as you want. It doesn't change the fact that it's true.
And, and all I'm doing is stating where we're actually at, and the actual truth is, would I say tax and spend? No. We don't go to meetings and, and a bunch of council members say, "Hey, let's just tax people so we can get more money." But what we do have is we do have some people that are, for some reason, so. They, they, to be honest, they, they act scared to make any big moves. Or, or make any big waves in the system, okay? So when you're not willing to do that, then your spending levels stay at a certain level, right? Or increase because.
Because naturally, government wants to grow.
Things increase. Things increase, exactly. So when we say, well, we have this that we need, or this that we want to do, or this that we deserve, we don't have the money for it. So what do we do? Raise taxes.
Well, and an awful lot of what happens is, I saw this on the park board as well. Salary and insurance and retirement costs are, are just an incredible part of it. The headcount is, is just a huge part of, of running, of running any organization.
Yeah. We, we spend, we spend, and I know you've seen a big chunk of this on the park board, but we spend a few million, several million in insurance.
Yep.
Health, health insurance.
All right. Well, we're going to leave the budget stuff at there. We'll, we'll move on for now.
Okay.
Dakota and I took a field trip, because Dakota is also, like Nate Lamar.
Is that what we're gonna, we're gonna touch on that today?
Yeah. We, we went to, we visited a city council meeting, because you're starting to think about the potential of possibly maybe running for something in the future that might happen to have something to do with the city council.
Yeah, but we're not totally for sure yet.
We're not making any announcements, because we don't want to trigger any sort of a, of a, uh, an inquisition, like I had, did I, I've told you guys the story that I wound up going before the Indiana, yeah.
That's why James Neese is your son.
James Neese is my son, because he testified that stenographer messed it up and, you know, the story, that's the old legendary story. But I got fined a thousand dollars by the Indian Election Commission, so I'm just trying to keep you from having a fine from Henry County Election Board. They don't have nearly the stiff abilities that, I think it's, you know, a little bit, it'd be two fifties the max you'll get hit with here, but I don't want anything happening to you, so I'm trying to take care of it.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, I just can't afford it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what happened. That, that's actually why they waived my fee too. They said, well, you have a thousand dollar fee, Mr. Moore.
I know that would help on the budget a lot.
Right, yeah, oh, yeah.
No, the way, the way Indiana election code's set up, that probably gets split between the two, the parties that have, that have members on the, uh, on the election board and they get to, that's beer money for the next year. Uh, but they waived my fee, uh, at the, at the state level. So we went and visited the, uh, the Newcastle City Council and followed up with, uh, our guest from episode twenty-two, twenty-three, and sat, uh, sat right behind Mr. Dickens.
Yeah, the city council meeting was on, uh, Monday, as it usually is, correct?
Every other Monday.
Every other Monday.
Whether you want one or not.
Yep. Uh, basically, uh, they opened up the meeting. The first thing they did was actually the, uh, the council, voted on a motion to come out, uh, against, uh, gerrymandering. Which as libertarians, that's, that's typically a big deal in our circle.
Yeah, absolutely. So we're, we're interested in, uh, in improving election, uh, you want to slide forward a little bit, Clay, if you want to be on the, on the camera. You're, you're falling right out of the shot.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to let, scoot back a little bit and, and give the show away, you know?
Okay. So, basically, they, they had this thing set up that, uh, every, um, I guess that you guys are going to be getting it um, here soon. It's basically this page that, that comes up and it's, uh, in support of redistricting, uh, right now and in support of a redistrict every ten years. Um, it's in support of a committee that is made up of citizens and constituents that, uh,
Basically, what happens is, is there's a, uh, the, the counties will have to reapportion their, uh, their numbers or their districts. Uh, every ten years we take a census and we have to do that.
Yeah, yeah, and the, the board that does that is made up by citizens. Like, it's not, it's an appointed, uh, position.
I don't think that's the case.
That is exactly the case. That's what they, that's what they wrote.
That's what they're asking for. That's their, their resolution is to ask for that, but right now, they're, yeah.
All of this is what they're asking for. None, nothing is concrete at all. It's not like they could pass anything. This is just in passing, saying that, yes, we all unanimously agree with this. But, uh, they, this meeting was whenever they passed the budget.
Right.
For the city.
That was the main thing. And so the highlights from it were the, uh, basically, everything got passed, no, no issues at all, except there were two dissenting votes to the ordinance dealing with the city mayor, council and clerk pay raises.
Yes. That was, uh, Aaron Dickens and Rex Peckinpah.
Yep.
Uh, they were against the, Aaron, which he was on the podcast last week and he, he made it very clear, he's not against the mayor raises or the, the clerk treasurer raises. But he is against, he, he doesn't feel like he does, like they do, the work to warrant that raise.
Right. And then, uh, there, there was about an hour of discussion over, over large trash, which, you know, that's the way, the way small cities work. You have, these are the, the basic utilities and functions are what they have to go over. And they, uh, they spent a, a great amount of time. There's two factions, Clay. There's a faction that says, if we don't pick up the large trash, it's going to get dumped out in the county and it's going to be a mess on somebody else's hands, so we need to keep picking it up. And there's another faction that says, either we're going to let it sit on the curb or not, and the county, the city shouldn't be doing this anyway. It's costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Uh, and basically, they decided they're going to study it. They haven't, they're, they're not to a point to make any decisions yet, but they're still, they're still discussing, and I think the council's.
Fall study committee.
Yeah, and as, you know, as libertarians and in the libertarian circles that we run in, obviously, people are going to say, why can't a private contractor, and you and I talked about this too, why can't a private contractor just do this? And yes, we both agreed, it's going to open up a market to where we'll see on like, um, Facebook Marketplace and Newcastle rummage sales and Connorsville man cave.
Somebody say, hey, I need this, this couch hauled away, twenty bucks, and somebody will come take it and it'll be done.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, uh, but on the other hand, I worked, my first job was on a farm.
Sure.
We had twenty-two acres of farmland and, um, there were multiple times during the years that I worked there from age fourteen to sixteen and where I would have to go out and pick up trash, because somebody had literally driven into a cornfield, driven, sorry, driven into a cornfield and got in the bed of their truck and dumped half of a bathroom or half of a living room in the cornfield. So not only is the farmer losing money because some of his crops are destroyed, but he's also losing money because he has to go and pay me the current minimum wage to go out there and pick up trash. And if I get injured on the job or poked with a hypodermic needle while I'm out there, then he's got to pay for that too. It's.
Your slippery slope, Mr. Progressive Libertarian over there is getting, uh, it's getting, it's getting questionable.
Well, here's the thing that I'm thinking.
You're thinking it's the government's job.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I mean, it's a private company that comes and does it for the government.
Well, right now, they're city employees. Why not just eliminate all trash service completely and let, let somebody hire Big B or any one of the three companies that service our area now that I could hire, living in West States?
Yeah.
Right. So why, why does the city need to provide that service at all?
I'm not saying that the city necessarily has to provide that service, but unless we're going to do away with all trash services and go to a private company, then we cannot exclude part of it while we keep one part of it.
Well, and, and on that note, you know, dealing with local government, something could be an awesome idea if you could alleviate that cost and then just let a private contractor do it, like you said.
You would also eliminate that revenue from the, from their, your sewer and water bill as well.
But what would, um, say somebody doesn't, doesn't use it, say they do, just go dump it somewhere or?
Then you have an ordinance and you, you, you're violating somebody else's property rights and you go deal with it. And if somebody lets it pile up, then you have a county health department that's going to come in and step in and, and do their job, just like they do now, if somebody has stuff piling up and they don't let it get hauled away.
Okay. So, so at some point, and that's why I was, because, again, we, the thing I say all the time, if people would just be self-responsible.
Sure.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have some of these problems, right?
And, I mean, I've used, I've utilized the large trash pickup myself, because I did not have, okay. There was a point in my life, and I know it's hard to believe, considering the beautiful studio that I built, that I was.
That we have built.
You guys have done a wonderful job.
Yeah. That I was, I was dead broke all the time. I lived paycheck to paycheck whenever I first moved out on my own. I was desperate to get out of the house. I moved, I bought a house, remodeled it and just lived paycheck to paycheck. I made just barely over ten dollars an hour. And I lived here and, uh, you know, still had a girlfriend that I wanted to take out on dates and things, you know, and so that, I mean, that was my life. I did, I had a little car.
Did you ever picket for fifteen dollars an hour or?
No.
No?
No, actually, in the union that I belong to, uh, striking was outlawed.
Not allowed.
Interesting.
How interesting.
World's worst union. Yes. So anyway, so the, uh, the city trash thing is, uh, it's undecided. Uh, we'll continue to keep an eye on that and as that comes along, we'll, we'll see, but, you know, it's, once again, it's another opportunity to reevaluate, in my view, and say, hey, do we, do we really have to be able, because the county doesn't provide this.
No. Well, and I, you know, what's so funny is some of these things I hear about and I'm like, really? Because I live in the city. I have never used the big trash pickup.
Right.
Like, I always just, my dad has a pickup. I fill it up.
We take it to the dump.
I take it to the dump. Like, I just do that on my own. So when I hear about some of these things, I'm like, really? That's an issue?
And there was, I mean, and here's one thing that you're not going to hear out of the, the local newspaper, was that like, Mayor York, and I have a lot of respect for Mayor York, I really do. I think he's a genuine person. I think that he really tries his hardest. But his emotions were high with this. Him and Jeff Hancock. And Jeff, I mean, you've met him and I don't know if he listens to this or not.
Did you serve on the council or did, was, was that the overlap?
That was the overlap.
Oh, that's who he defeated. Hi, Jeff.
That was the overlap.
Yeah, and I mean, I don't know if either one of these people are listening right now, but, I mean, Jeff is just like leaning back in his chair, and if you're watching on video, then you'll see it, but he's like this. And, and Mayor York is like, like about to hop out of his seat and like raising his voice at him.
I've heard county, city council meetings have been interesting, so.
Luckily, uh, one Monday a month, I'm freed up now that I wasn't before, so now I can go watch for the sport of it.
There you go.
Only one Monday a month, though.
Yeah. Well, they have them twice. Yeah, now, now I've got all my Mondays free, at least on that side. All right.
Yeah, and there was just so many things that I disagreed with on this whole thing, but I, I guess we'll, we'll move on.
We'll hear, we might hear more about that, uh, in, uh, about a year from now.
There we go, perhaps. As Dakota continues to monitor the situation and make any adjustments you may need to make.
Develop us exploratory committee.
Perhaps.
Maybe.
Perhaps, yeah. You can start raising money. You don't have to say what you're running for, but you do have to do some paperwork. All right. So then the other, um,
I hate paperwork.
The other item on here isn't nearly as much fun. Um,
No, and that's why we're ending the episode with it.
Yeah, so the, the Las Vegas thing happened and Monday was just a, just a brutal day, uh, for me, and I'm sure you guys too, but I was, and if you listened to the Tuesday episode of We Are Libertarians, Chris Spangle was pretty eloquent, talking, talking about the, uh, the Las Vegas murders. And it just, it knocked the wind out of me. Monday, Monday was awful.
Yeah, I, I first woke up and I, I looked at my phone, I opened Facebook and I, I saw something that, uh, that the headline was like twenty people dead and mass shooting in Las Vegas, but it was like a, a very unreputable news source. I would say it wasn't mainstream or anything and I was like, uh, it's just clickbait, you know? I didn't believe it until, um.
I think there was something in Wall Chat, like, like in the middle of the night, I looked at it and saw something, maybe Tyler or somebody.
That's, that's where I, I'd opened Wall Chat and then I saw it again and I was like, holy cow, this is actually real, you know, like, geez. So I started reading more on it and I've been sucked into the news ever since about it.
Yeah, and I, you, you have the helpless feeling, Clay, you know, you just don't, you know, obviously you're two thousand miles away and you're just reading about it, and obviously there's heroic stories and, you know, a very sick person. So I, I didn't know what to do. I, I just, I said, hell with it, I'm giving blood. I tried to talk Dakota into it, we couldn't make the arrangements work out. Uh, but Audrey gave blood and I gave blood and I knew, you know, it struck me, not the, not the fifty people, fifty-eight people that died, but the five hundred that were injured was just like.
It's massive.
It, it just, yeah, and you just, that was.
It's a war, it's a war zone. I mean, it's massive, it, yeah.
And they're all traumatic, like traumatic injuries, and you're just like, that's, that, that, obviously there's going to be a need for blood, and then you've got the hurricanes and everything else. So I went and I made an arrangement, uh, or went, the Bloodmobile was in Muncie and I work up there, so I just ran over and, and gave real quick. Uh, and I challenge anybody to, to do it now or within the next week or two.
Audrey went and donated blood.
Yep. Yeah, so it's a, it's a big deal. Um, I, uh, the other stuff on the issue though, I mean, conspiracy theory, it's like whenever you have a lack of information, you get this conspiracy theories just, just come out and they're, you know, you've got all of these people that were involved, a crime scene that's just ridiculously large and, yeah. Obviously, information's not going to flow quickly from law enforcement, so then everybody tries to fill the gap and and everybody, you know, you've got all the social media and all the videos and, and, and then it just spirals into, everybody can go to crazy town on you, which is even more upsetting.
Very fast. Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, it's, uh, I like some of the, you know, some of the comments that I, that I did read is just, can we just pause for a second?
Yeah.
Realize what happened?
And then, yeah, and then that, that's, Monday, everybody gets political.
Yeah, exactly.
That was driving me crazy too. And I'm still not ready to get political about it.
And neither am I, absolutely not. I mean, that, that was, it was horrific, horrific, and, the thing that I thought was disgusting is the opportunist on the political side that kept wanting to throw stuff out there. It's like, really? Because to me, out of, out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks.
Yep.
And so when the first thing you want to say is, well, it's their fault, it's their fault, it's their fault, well.
Shows a lot about your character.
That, it does. It tells me where your heart is.
Cade Coker had made a post about it and it was sharing what Hillary Clinton said. It was like, uh, just a couple of hours after the news broke about it. Was that she said, um, imagine if this had been done with a silencer that the NRA wants to make easier to obtain. And I, I told Cade, I, Cade, I told Cade that, I said, if only she'd imagined, she had reacted this quickly to Benghazi.
Yeah. That, you, you know, honestly with, with Hillary, I, I think, you know, I've never saw eye to eye with her, obviously, uh, but I've never been disgusted. Now, and I know, because there has been some things in the past, such as Benghazi, where I know some of our guys and gals have been disgusted with her, because they had firsthand experience, right?
Right.
But really, for the first time, I was, I can say I was disgusted, uh, by her statement. Not that I, I mean, I'm just little old me in Henry County, Indiana, but she disgusted me with that statement. That was.
She's not the only one. There were people.
No, and then she's not, but, but I didn't dig. That's the thing. I didn't dig into it. And, and with Facebook and Twitter, I avoided the conversation, because I didn't want to see all that crap, to be honest with you.
To me, the biggest thing is just trying to find reputable news when it's going, you know, and it's just.
Right. And now, a few days later, now some things are starting to come out. Some, some legitimate pieces.
Sure.
And, and so you can listen to that and, and start to put something together, but still to, to say we have a conclusion is ridiculous.
All right. Anything else on that topic, guys, or we, uh, we got that as wrapped up as we can for the week?
Yeah, just thinking about the, the victims and the families and everything and as all this stuff comes to light. We were going to talk a little bit more about it, but it's still like in such a shocking phase. Cause I, I, I don't know, I guess by Tuesday, I thought that, I guess on Tuesday, I thought that by now it would be a little less like shocking, you know, but it's still just incredible to me.
It's, it's too sobering still.
Yeah.
You think, you know, moms were lost, dads were lost, kids were lost. I mean,
Yep.
Family, in an instant, families changed.
Yeah. It's so easy to distance yourself. But whenever you step back and think, these people live lives just like I did.
Yep.
And if I, if I had died in the shooting, there would be millions of other people just like me thinking about it that way.
You know, today is a set of prayer for my kids when I was, um, dropping them off for school and stuff, because usually every day, um, I pray in the van with them, but today, uh, I forgot, and so I said my prayer after dropping them off, but, um, you know, that's one thing I prayed about, you know, because, you know, every day I send these kids to school, there's so much out of our control. And when events like this happen, um, like I said, it's sobering. And it's just like, you know, and for me, you know, I just said, God, they're, you know, they're in your hands. I, you know, I do all I can, but this is an evil world and evil things happen.
All right. Well, um, I guess we'll move into our final thoughts portion here. Um, we've had, uh, this is an interesting new week for us here in the studio. Uh, got a lot of thanks to give to folks. Got new, uh, new headshots. Dakota and I did, uh, did the live event down at Morty's a couple of weeks ago, and Ben DeJean came down from Michigan on his birthday and did a photo shoot for We Are Libertarians.
Oh, wow, cool.
So we got some sweet, uh, sweet new pictures.
That's where some of those pictures came from?
That's where those came from. Uh, yeah. Uh, if we had been able to get Clay down there, we could have the three, three of us, but we're, we're going to get him in some pro shots with us together.
Riding your coat tail.
That's it. Um, so, but it's, uh, just lots and lots of cool things have happened. We've got a super secret group, the Inner Circle. You can, uh, you can apply for membership. Uh, we gave, uh, temporary membership. You can, uh, you can apply for membership. Uh, we gave, uh, temporary membership to Darren Jacobs, as long as he's on his best behavior.
Yep, nine month, nine month probationary period, Darren.
Nine months, wow, wow.
Dakota's in charge of tracking that. Uh, and then the one thing I wanna ask for, for people, uh, if you wanna help support the page, support, support the show, uh, we need to get a, we created a YouTube page, so this is our second video that we're doing, that is, uh, that, that's gonna be on, on YouTube. We did our test video last night, and then this episode twenty-four is actually gonna be on our YouTube page. For us to have a static location for that, we need to have, um, we need to have a, a hundred subscribers. So we have to be around thirty days as well, and we just launched the page, so that's, we haven't met, met that mark yet, but by the time we get to thirty days, I need to have a hundred subscribers. Uh, so I ask anybody that's listening, jump on YouTube. Don't just like the videos, liking the videos is cool, but just actually click subscribe to the, to the YouTube page, and, uh, we'll get, uh, get to the number we need to have, and then we'll be face, you know, youtube.com slash Boss Hogg of Liberty or whatever, and then we can use that on other platforms, so people can actually go out and find, find us easily.
Yeah, because right now, if you search Boss Hogg of Liberty on YouTube, you have to sift through like four, um, four first videos that are of, uh, of the Dukes of Hazzard, and then you'll find it.
How dare they use our name?
Yeah.
I mean, come on, get with the, get with the current millennium, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
We're the new show in town.
Nobody cares about them anymore.
All right, um, anything else that you guys have, final thoughts wise? Uh, Dakota? Anything to plug?
No, just like and subscribe. Uh, all of our bumper stickers are spoken for, and the only way that you're gonna get a fridge magnet is if you are a guest on the show.
All right, so it's time to reorder already. The, uh, the bumper stickers, I, uh, I caught some crap last night from Dakota, because I was less than generous in, in speaking of the design. I think they're quaint, and I think they are, um, they're gonna be memorable, and they'll be in the museum someday.
All right, the museum?
Yeah, in the, in the Boss Hogg of Liberty Museum.
It'll probably be preserved in this guest bedroom, I'm sure.
Yes, forever and ever. Clay, any final thoughts from your side tonight?
Uh, only final thought is, um, again, on the budget.
Oh.
I won't, I won't go forever, but no, I just, uh, I, I can say that this, just simply, uh, for Henry County residents, uh, this budget is, is obviously not perfect. Uh, we obviously still have some work to do. I'm still concerned about some of the same things that I've always been concerned about. Uh, however, for twenty eighteen, um, this, this is a budget that gets us, um, level, and the council, uh, did, uh, acknowledge that there are some things that we need to adjust in the future. So, uh, it's my goal that even as early as February, March, uh, to start making sure we follow, um, where the money's going and kinda keep a consistent track record throughout the year, knowing where we're at, so. Um, so anyways, as of right now, as long as things stay the same, um, I went from an absolute no, uh, to, to a yeah, I can, I can work with this.
So you're gonna be a three out of five you voted for, or three out of five you voted against? Where's this gonna put you, on, on the Clay scale?
Yeah, on the Clay scale, this, if, if I vote yes on this one, this will put me out of five votes, five years, uh, three yeses and two nos.
All right, sixty percent of the time, he's okay to work with, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and you gotta, here's one thing people forget, the same people that put me in office, put these people in office.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, I mean, you have a variation of voters, right? But this, these are the people that the residents of Henry County said-
These forty-eight thousand voters picked you seven.
We want them on the council, so, I mean,
Yep.
You know, at some point, you, you know, you kinda, you, you work together, you stand for what's right, and you, then you go on for the next battle.
Very good. All right, well, we appreciate the, uh, the, the views and the listens. Like, subscribe and share, as always, uh, continuing to build this channel and this platform. Uh, you know, sometimes we deal with more local issues this week. Obviously, we have, uh, you know, we, we super serve the local audience. Next week is gonna be a little more general audience. Uh, we'll see what the topics of the, uh, topics of the world are next week. Um, Clay will be off, uh, dealing with some other responsibilities. It'll be a Wednesday show next week, uh, so look for that. We'll have another live, uh, live seven o'clock broadcast, or in the seven o'clock hour Eastern Time. Uh, Kat and Agnos is scheduled to be with us, and, uh, Dakota and I are gonna spend the weekend camping together and going to a, a Garth Brooks concert, so-
So by Wednesday, we still might hate each other.
By Wednesday, he probably, he won't be speaking to me, and we're just gonna pretend to be nice for the podcast. Uh, but Kat's gonna be here, and I think, uh, we're, we're gonna try to talk the lovely Audrey Jo into participating as well.
She's dead set on coming.
We'll have, uh, we'll have the four seats occupied.
You guys will finally hit, hit the thousand mark, right?
I'm sure, it'll be, hell, it may be ten thousand of those two.
Finally.
So, all right, with that, we, uh, we should appreciate everybody listening, and, uh, we'll let y'all tune in next week.
There we go.
And Dakota can kill the live feed at any time.
Oh, I'll try.